Do you want to give people another minute? Or? I think we're okay starting. All right, so let's call the meeting to order March 23rd, 2020. This is our first time doing a Zoom BOE meeting in Beacon City School District. We start, I just wanted to mention that you'll see that the board agenda is care of essential business that the district has to, has to take care of to function. Um, so you can notice that there's where a lot of things are removed from the agenda for this meeting. So we can cut, so we could become familiar with this type of meeting process as well as complete the business that the district needs. So with that being said, um, there is also a executive session on that. We may waive later on in the meeting, but it is there in case we do. Um, with that being said, I would like to have everyone please rise for the pledge.
Pledge allegiance.
To the flag.
To the flag.
The United States of America.
And to the republic.
For which it stands.
Which it stands.
One nation.
A nation.
Under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Justice for all.
All right, Kelly, you want to do roll call?
Better bit? Here. Mr. Caslay.
Delayed.
Ms. Lynn is excused. Mr. Rakowski.
Here.
Stadler.
Here.
Mr. Singh.
It's showing that he's on here. I don't know if the audio is set up yet.
Mr. Wolf. Ms. Huer.
Here.
Mr. White.
Present. All right, so as I was saying, for some people that just came on, we did do a condensed version of tonight. So we're going to go right into the superintendent report. We did waive our public session student and school groups and parent groups to the meeting. Um, and it's not on the agenda just because it's a new format. And it's not that we're trying to shun the public, but we are just trying to get used to this new way of doing business. And we want to make sure we get all the business of the district done, um, so the business, so the district can operate. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Matt for the superintendent's report.
Uh, all right. Good evening, everyone. Thanks for joining us in this format. First of all, I hope everyone's doing okay through all of this and, and hanging in there. We definitely did discover on the home front that the cold rainy day that goes on all day makes the, makes this kind of day go just a little bit longer. So, uh, so that's one thing we learned to say. But anyway, just the report from the district side, uh, we have been focused on four things. This last week. One is the getting the meals program off the ground. The second, advancing our understanding and implementation of distance learning. The third is, uh, this sort of newest update or mandate to provide daycare for essential workers. And the fourth is to, to keep work governance going. So, uh, so just quick updates on all those. Uh, we, we were able to do to some advanced planning and Karen Pagano from food service, uh, the magic that she works. We were able to get the food program going the very first Monday of this school closure. Uh, we have, you know, two, two locations where we're doing it. We, last week, we kind of averaged about 300 students served daily. And, uh, and then this week we switched it to just having Mondays and Wednesdays where you get multiple days of food. And we also today started implementing a delivery system for people who are requesting it. And, uh, and so today we doubled it. We had over 600 kids served today. So, uh, we were really excited about that. And, uh, we're going to keep, uh, kind of tweaking the delivery thing. Our transportation folks, some of them came in to help with that. Our food services team has been amazing. Karen's leadership has been amazing. And, uh, and all the, all the people in the food services department have been coming in, uh, to make all this happen. And so, uh, you know, the turnout was huge today and they totally met the challenge and, uh, and did an awesome job. So, uh, we've also had some community partners. We've had Fairground organization giving out, uh, like sort of like dinner bags for families. Common Ground Farm has been getting their backpack program up and going. And, uh, sort of a coalition of community groups is, has, I guess, a large shipment of groceries for Wednesday. And they're going to be giving bags of groceries for everyone who comes. And we'll, uh, add that to delivery as well. So, uh, food program is, uh, up and running and going really well. Just a quick updates on the other things, you know, uh, we had sort of a funny calendar thing in that, uh, the day all this happened. We had our teachers with us and our students for a professional learning day. And so knowing that this was probably coming, we had our teachers develop, uh, at, at least 10 days of, of, uh, what we call supplemental learning activities for kids to do, either with their Chromebook or at the elementary level, uh, paper and pencil or a mix of the two. And so, uh, our kids are kind of working their way through that over these two weeks. And we are working with our teachers this week and the early part of next week to launch, uh, a little bit more robust of a distance learning program. So we're meeting with a group of teachers tomorrow virtually to work on that. And, uh, and, you know, there's a million questions that we're starting our way through. And I don't have the answers to them also. I, I ask for patience from the community and our implementation of it. But I know, uh, just like has happened with every aspect of this, people are really stepping up. And so we hope, uh, we hope to really kind of get the phase two of that going next week. Our goal is to get it going next week. I do, you know, I will say that I strongly feel that nothing replaces the, the interaction of a teacher and students in a class. Or nothing really replaces that. So this is, this is something that we hope just, uh, keeps the learning momentum going. And, and as we do our best to implement the new model for however long this lasts. So, so next week will, when we sort of launch the second phase of our distance learning, uh, part three, daycare for essential workers. Members of the team kind of in charge of this, even though Karen does the food and Marie Corderoni is kind of coordinating from the executive level, the, the food and meals program and also making sure payroll happens. Uh, Eric Wright is, uh, managing, uh, you know, from a district perspective, this shift to a different kind of learning. Bill Rolone is helping to coordinate the, or is coordinating the daycare. So, uh, we're, we're kind of doing a mix of things. We're, uh, looking at, um, putting some of the kids, uh, we had, we put the survey out last week and we, uh, and we had, uh, we had several respondents to it and people who qualify. So some of those people were matching up with community daycares. And then we're working on providing daycare through the district for, uh, some of the other children. And so we have a lot of details to work out there as well. But we're going to work in the next day or two and identifying some people who are going to help us run this and, and then starting it. And so, uh, it will be in one of our elementary schools. We're thinking South Avenue right now, just because their kitchen, uh, is one of the kitchens that is operating right now for the meals program. And, uh, again, this is just for people who qualify through the essential worker guidelines that the governor put out. But our hope is to both place some kids in community programs and to, uh, and to get, get a small program, uh, through the district up and running in the next, uh, in the next few days. So then, and then the board part is having meetings like this. And so thanks for everyone for trying this, uh, this new way, uh, tonight. And then just, uh, a shout out to a lot of people, to the community for, for, um, showing its best self. And with all the volunteers and all the sort of rallying around each other during this time, a lot of that rallying is, is virtual rallying. But even so, it's been really powerful to see. And, and also too, so many of our employees have volunteered their time, uh, to either help with the food program, to assist families in need, uh, you know, to, to help us out with some things over the last, uh, week and a half. And so just a huge thank you to both the community and, and, uh, so many of our employees who have stepped up and helped us out during this. You know, we have tried our absolute best to get all three of those things up and running, uh, that I talked about. And we're just going to keep working really hard, uh, to get the rest as we sort of await, um, what happens next from the governor in terms of school closure. And so, and then, you know, we haven't heard anything on that end. So, um, so anyway, thank you and thanks to the board for supporting our work through all this as well.
Any questions for Matt?
Matt, I had a question. I sent you this in an email. Hi, James here. Can you all hear me?
Yep.
Okay. I sent you this, uh, question in email, but I'd heard some people asking if it would be possible to arrange having homework packets printed for distribution for people who don't have printers.
Yeah, um, that's, I've been sort of monitoring what other districts are doing with this too. That is kind of in the list of our, uh, questions we need to figure out, um, or get answers to. So I definitely think that's possible. We need to bring some people back into the buildings. We kind of basically shut down, uh, most of our buildings for this. And we would need to bring some folks back to, to get that going. But yeah, I mean, at the elementary level, you know, do we do another round? A lot of the elementary kids got learning packets. Uh, we probably will need to do another round of those, but we want to do that in a safe way. Uh, or for, you know, for our teachers who are able and willing to do that. But we also want to do it in a way that, uh, we're still executing the social distancing. So that is definitely something I, you know, another thing we're working on is, uh, is trying to, uh, for, for people who are in need, um, and obviously there's last steps we have to work out with this. But providing some temporary hotspots for some families that only, only BCSD devices could work on. The, the equipment part of the hotspot is of course on back order right now. So it would have to be like the first week of May, or excuse me, the first week of April that we would have access to those. But yes, we are looking into like printing stuff out, making more learning packets for kids, like also finding ways to provide wifi for families who need it. So we have a lot of things to work on with that.
Thanks. Any other questions for Matt?
This is Mike Rakowski. Matt, thanks again for all your leadership and everything you're doing to keep, uh, keep ahead of this. One question with the daycare for essential workers. What do we do in that situation to keep with the kids? Are they, are they spread around or how do we deal with that?
That is a great question. We, uh, we, we have to, you know, figure out a lot with that before we open. So we are working with, you know, the Duchess County daycare folks to make sure we do it the right way. If we're able to get some of the students on the list into some private daycares, then the number we would have would be relatively small. Uh, so I think we could do it in a way that's healthy, but you know, we want to make sure, uh, we want to make sure we do it the right way. So we're trying to get all those questions answered right now. That is definitely a work in progress. I mean, we would also involve our, uh, you know, our, our, at least our head nurse, uh, in it, uh, in both the development of it and, and helping assist. And so, so some of these things, we're kind of in the process of figuring out, but that is definitely on the list that we're dealing with, with the care for sure.
All right, thank you, Matt. Matt, oh, sorry, go ahead.
I'm sorry. Um, I had a quick question about spring break. I mean, it seems like we are, um, not going to have a normal spring break, obviously. But I'm wondering if one of these weeks will officially count as spring break so that, um, you know, students aren't going to have as much work to do or just that their schedule would change a little bit in that way.
Uh, you know, that, that's a good question. That's kind of been evolving. Last week, the governor, um, ordered districts to use their snow days and spring break days. So that would be now, um, or that would be last week and this week. And then the governor kind of shifted that order a day or two ago. And, and I simply, I think, sort of wiped spring break out. So, you know, we're, I, our vision, and of course it's something that's being implemented, you know, in kind of very different way. But, uh, across a lot of different teachers, but that, um, we did provide these supplemental learning activities for kids to do. They can kind of do it at their own pace. If they want to go slow during these, uh, you know, last week and this week, that's totally okay. But we provided so kids could start, start to get used to it and start to get into sort of a routine. But again, you know, trying to kind of wrap our arms around how to implement this has been challenging. And people are kind of doing it in different ways. And I know, I know there's amazing things happening already. You know, but essentially this is kind of the off week for teachers, uh, where they're kind of gathering themselves a little bit and, and trying to put things together where they're officially not on call this week. But there's, I mean, at least my understanding with the governor put out a couple of days ago, there's really no official spring break anymore. We're just sort of in distant mode right now.
Any other questions?
Yeah, I had another question. Can you all hear me?
Yep.
Yep.
So this is about the, the food organizations, you know? I think I mentioned to some of you, you may know, my wife Maggie Dickinson is one of the core organizers with Fairground. And Fairground, it seems like is merging. I know Helena from Green Team is organizing along with the, the group newly founded Beacon Mutual Aid. They are, I know there's a, a plan for this, I believe it's this Wednesday for sort of a large drop off from the Duchess County Food Bank. That's going to be, and I know that I think they're already in contact with Karen Pagano about organizing the distribution of that with, coincides with, uh, the food drop offs. My understanding, and I just wanted to throw those out there, I might be able to connect it, is that that portion of the food distribution is not necessarily only for schoolchildren or school families, that anyone from the public is, can access that, those grocery picking.
I mean, officially our food, um, you know, our officially the food we put out is for our students.
Right. The, the food distribution that's happening Wednesday from the Duchess County Food Bank, I believe is going to be near, but not together. You know, so it's not going to be distributed along with the food for schoolchildren. But it's near. I'm just curious if there's any way that that can be, I don't think, I don't know if it's being advertised or not, as being open to the public. Do you have thoughts as to whether or not, should not be advertised to the public?
We could advertise it. I mean, the food thing is really scary for a lot of folks and, uh, right now, and you know, I've, since all the delivery requests have come through me, and I haven't required people to share their stories, but a lot of people are, um, either stuck in their house for a variety of reasons or kind of, you know, really in a lot of bad places. Uh, and food, you know, food is obviously a necessity and something people are really worrying about right now. So that all being said, we, I think we can figure it out, uh, how to coordinate it. I'm happy to advertise it. And maybe we kind of have, South Avenue is a little, the space is a little tighter. So, um, we'd have to get creative over there, but, uh, the high school has enough space where we could kind of do dual food distributions, I guess. And, uh, and the only thing I would ask is, you know, it's the food, since food assembly at RN doubles essentially today, which is, which is a great problem to have. Uh, we, we want Karen's focus to be getting, getting the food ready. So Anne Marie, like I'm going to ask that Anne Marie, or these kind of requests go to Anne Marie or me. And we'll work with our, our essentially our administrative team is really helping with, uh, uh, the distribution part. We want the food services people to be basically getting the food ready. And so if you can, if folks can reach out to us, like I'll advertise it, but we can also work on like the, the distribution model. Cause today we tried it, we tried to kind of also separate the walk ups and the drive ups, and that seemed to work okay. So we're, we're trying to tweak this as we go. So just, uh, I know you sent me an email about it initially, about advertising it. But if you guys want to coordinate, like how would this actually looks like, email me and Anne Marie and we'll, we'll work it through with you.
So that was the follow up question. Because I, I'm kind of tangentially involved. I just live with an organizer. I'm not myself an organizer. Uh, are you in touch directly with either representative from Fairground Mutual Aid or Helena from Green Team?
Uh, I am, I am with Fairground and I have an email from Mutual Aid that, uh, it sort of didn't go straight to me, but it went to my assistant that I have not answered yet. But we're, yeah, in Green Team, we're always kind of in touch with them, um, before all this happens. So.
If you would like for me.
We can do tomorrow, since we don't have the food program resolved, writing an email, we can get like a conference call or one of these things going and we can sort of talk things through.
What I was warning them against was not overwhelming you with three people or more contacting you with the same request. So if maybe.
I mean, there, there is a lot of, uh, I'm getting a lot of emails and, and, and communications about food right now. And so I'm trying to work through parents' stuff and kids' stuff and then, but tomorrow's a day, I think, where we can catch up a little bit. And so Anne Marie, um, let's, we'll try to get like some sort of caller video chat going with some of these folks. Just like we, like I said, I mean, we have three goals with this and one is to keep learning going. One is to get this food off the ground and the other is the daycare. And the food really right from the jump in a sense was, is the most important thing. And so, um, and so any, I, I love that all these people are stepping up. And I see that a lot of people are donating financially, uh, to some of these organizations, which is awesome. And, uh, it's been really powerful. And I, I'll have to say from the staff side, seeing the community volunteers handing out, uh, dinner bags and grocery bags and all of that is very powerful for us and, um, to see that. And so it's, it's, it's been really cool. So thank you.
Laura, did you have a question?
I had a comment, Alyssa.
Oh, go ahead.
Matt, I just wanted to let you know that the, the feedback I'm seeing on social media has been just incredibly positive about your handling of this whole situation. And everyone is really, um, feeling reassured and really happy with the way, um, that you've conducted everything. In fact, a member of the city council told me that she's using you as a model for our, for Beacon's mayor. So, um, I just wanted to relay the, all the kudos that I'm seeing.
Thank you. I mean, you know, I, I think I said this in an email, but it's been, uh, amazing to see, uh, you know, people across the district really stepping up. Like it just talked about the volunteers that we, our administrative team is like completely united and working with either the food or the learning part or getting materials to kids. You know, so that's been cool. Then we have so many volunteers from all of our different departments and, and units, uh, you know, volunteering to help too. So this has definitely been a team effort. And, and I, I did my first, uh, what is it, what's it called? I did my first little video update. So I had to laugh. I had some production assistants, the people joining me in my, you know, in my shelter in place or whatever we're calling this, uh, helped me at home make the video. But I think this week there might be another one coming later in the week if it's a nice day out. So, uh, but thanks for the feedback and the whole team has really come together on this. So it's been really cool.
Yeah, you guys are doing a great job. Please relay that to, to everybody.
I will, I will.
All right. Well, Matt, thank you so much for your update. You have been doing a great job, you and your team. We're going to go down to the committee reports, including board comments. We're going to start with this, uh, uh, facilities hasn't met since the last meeting, correct? For that. Facilities and operations, have they met since the last board meeting? No, right?
No, no, we, we postponed it.
Okay. All right, James, you want to go to policy?
Yeah, sure. What do you all think? We have a, we have a meeting scheduled for next Monday. I'm of two minds. One is that, um, I'm sure the administrative team has more than enough on their plate to think about that. So there's not an urgency to my understanding of any of the policies we have for review on that, on that date. On the other hand, I have quite a lot of time on my hands right now. So I certainly have plenty of time to review, um, a lot more policies. So I wanted to hear what you all think, uh, about that. Should we do it is the question.
I've got, I've got time also. I could, you know, I could do it or not do it, whatever.
Uh, Anthony?
I don't know if that was me or not. No, I think, um, if we could do, if we could use Zoom to do a policy, uh, policy committee meeting, I'm all for it. We can actually in Zoom, you can share your screen. So we could put the policy on the, on the, on the screen and, um, I guess deliberate by voice and go up and down the policy. So it may not be that bad.
Okay, but, um, we're open to giving it a try. So. Just James is right in that we might not, uh, we might not be able to do a lot of pre-work depending on how this week goes. But I, I think, you know, one of the goals is we got to keep the board work going as much as we can. So unless something drastically changes, I think we should probably give it a try.
I mean, I could propose as, as an alternative, um, is that rather than meeting this next week, we go ahead and get, uh, even more policies than we would have had to review for this next meeting. You know, we could really load up quite a lot of policies that we can, we can, the board members of the committee can review. We can mark up, we can send those to you, then we could push off the actual date to review. Uh, we could send any questions to legal. You could have those sitting, it might give you a little more time to.
Okay. Okay, that's, that's, that's fine.
Would that work better, you think? Give you a little more, give you a little more space.
Yeah.
Put more work on us.
Yes, that works.
Let's do that.
Okay.
Sounds good.
I have other comments. That's it. Well, just, I'd like to say that, uh, again, just reiterate, you guys are knocking it out of the park. It's really, really amazing. It's very inspiring. It is crazy, crazy times and really, really, really level. Uh, I very much liked your, Matt, your video update. Looks so, you seem very calm, you're the green of the grass, it's a beautiful day. Exactly the kind of, I think the kind of spirit we need right now. So, uh, yeah, keep it up. We're doing great.
All right, thank you.
All right, we're going to move to, uh, public relations and advocacy. Craig? Craig, you there?
Yeah, I think he needed to be unmuted. I couldn't respond earlier because I was still muted.
It seems that if you mute yourself, then you can't unmute yourself.
Right, you got to ask. I chatted with Mike. He says we need to request to be unmuted by him. So he controls who's actually speaking.
I see.
He did text it and, and Mike did it. Craig, you there?
Oh, okay. Apparently my phone is unmuted now. So I'm, I'm communicating by cell phone because that's the only microphone I have here. So can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Yes.
Very good. Okay. So one item to be briefed on has to do with, um, some pending activity in Albany relating to school board elections. The school board association is, uh, trying to get some kind of relief of some type. They're discussing this with, I believe, the commissioner and the governor's office. The Lower Hudson Education Coalition, of which our county school board association is affiliated, has proposed a municipal model for school budget approvals. And of course budget vote is the same vote as we have for school board elections. There, as you know, three of us every year come up for a vote. The NISBA has recommended against doing things like going door to door. I think these are obvious pieces of advice we should all sponsor and follow. Uh, we, we should also take note that it's all very difficult these days to find more than two or three people within six feet of you, anyplace, anywhere. So it's quite difficult to gather, uh, a petition vote, uh, in time for what would appear to be the deadlines that normally apply. So I don't have an answer for you today. And I don't think anybody has an answer today, but they appear to be working on it. What Lower Hudson Education Coalition has recommended, I shall read to you, uh, in summary fashion, that they recommend that boards should be permitted to approve a tax cap compliant school district budget with a 50% roll call vote or a super majority roll call vote if it were to override the tax cap. In our case, we haven't even considered overriding it. or a super majority roll call vote if it were to override the tax cap. In our case, we haven't even considered overriding it. So they've also suggested that current current board members could be reappointed at the July 1 reorg meeting until the next board election, or we could choose to hold a special election in the fall or kick it over to May of 2021. Also, provisions for appointment if somebody decides to leave a seat open. So as I say, this is just a suggestion that is coming from the Lower Hudson Education Coalition. And as of checking earlier today, I did not find any action items on that. I do listen to the governor's conferences on a daily basis to see whether anything comes up that might affect us. And so far, I have not heard anything specific about school board elections or budgets. So I think the alert for tonight is that we should stay tuned for something that might occur. This being the 23rd of March, we do have a little bit of time. However, there is a fairly definite schedule relating to petitions and circulations and all the things that pertain to that. So we might need to make ourselves updated on that. I'm sure Mrs. Corderoni keeps the calendar pretty close, and Mrs. Polagy is aware of the the calendar for school board elections. Please, the chairman, they might want to jump in with any information that they have, as Dr. Landall might. I know that some of the associations that our administrators belong to, including the school board attorneys, are also working on this issue and may have some other information. So that is basically where it stands as of tonight. And I would yield the floor to the ladies and gentlemen from the administration.
All right. Thank you for the update, Craig.
I had one question, Craig. I'm not sure if you know about this, but I read that the, you know, the normal process for the budget is that the governor puts out a budget, and then the Senate and the Assembly put their budget, their proposed budgets out, and then they sort of negotiate from there. And I think that Cuomo has asked to basically skip those steps and just negotiate from the budget that he proposed. And I think there's some pushback from the Assembly and the Senate. Do you know anything about that?
Not anything more than what you just said.
Okay.
All right. Flora, you want to go over wellness? Mike, can you unmute her?
There we go. There's really not much to report because we haven't had a meeting since the last board meeting. We are scheduled to have a meeting next week. Obviously, I'm assuming that that is going to be put off indefinitely until we know when school is back in session. Dr. Olan, I don't know if you want to chime in here or if that's the understanding.
Can you hear me?
Yeah.
Yeah, you know, we began working on the the policy. The group of us got together to look at the assessments from the schools. And as far as that, you know, we're just waiting to see what's going to happen with all this. And and then we'll get back together and update you guys as 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 this all comes, you know, around, you know?
Yeah, that makes sense. And just to repeat what everyone else has been saying, I think the district's response, and specifically Dr. Landall, you know, the way that you've led the district has been really incredible and definitely a model for other districts to follow. I'm really proud to be a parent in this district and a part of the of the school board. So thank you for all the work.
Thank you.
All right. Anthony? Mike, can you unmute Anthony? There you go. Oh.
Hello, University Committee. Yeah, the rest of the committee hasn't a meeting until until all this is done with pandemic. The, but I also want to echo a lot of the other board members' comments on on the work that Matt has done and the administration and the teachers and the and the staff and all the volunteers that have come together to look at after our own community here. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
Mike?
Nothing further. You know, I echo what everybody else has said about the leadership and that we so desperately needed, and you're really showing it. So I appreciate that. So that's about all I have.
All right. Thank you. Alyssa?
I think I made my comment earlier, just bravo, basically.
All right, Meredith?
There is a Duchess County School Board Association meeting on April 2. And we have decided, if there's interest, which I'm hoping there is, to do it using Zoom. And the guest is Jamie Cloud from the Cloud Institute, who is an educator and works in the area of sustainability. She's someone that the entire county is talking about working with through BOCs. So I think it'd be great for board members to to attend this meeting if you can. And you don't have to drive to BOCs, which is nice. So I'm going to forward the email to you guys, and you can let me know if you're interested, because I guess they're sort of measuring right now whether or not to do it, only if there is enough interest. And that's April 2, 7 p.m. And again, and I also just wanted to say that your response has been really great. Everyone, I got to witness the food distribution over at the high school this morning. And, you know, like Matt said, it was double what they had experienced last week, and everyone was just doing exactly what needed to be done without asking questions. Everyone had a great attitude, and it was incredibly heartwarming. So thank you.
Great. I have no comments besides reiterating what everybody else said. Great job to the administrative staff dealing with this situation. So really good job. All right, we're going to move to adopt the bond resolution for purchasing of school bus. That's going to be a roll call vote. Should I have, should I read that, Matt? Do I have to read the whole thing, or is it on board docs?
It's on board docs.
So I'm going to say, adopt the bond resolution authorizing the purchase of school bus as stated on the board doc 4.01.
So moved.
Wait, it's a roll call. So they're going to, because it's going to do a roll call for each of it.
I do have a question for Anne Marie on this one.
Okay.
Just wanted to verify, looking at the presentate, the transportation presentation. It said that it was for 272 passenger school buses and three 20 passenger Chevy Type A van buses. Is that still correct?
Yes, we haven't changed it from the board meeting.
Okay, I just didn't, I mean, I read through here, and I probably missed it, but I didn't see, I saw the dollar value not to exceed 400,000. But I was looking for what the anticipated purchase was, and I missed it. So that's why I asked.
Okay, so we do it not to exceed 400,000, just in case it's a little bit less or more once it gets the final prices. So that's why it's not the, we did something similar last year as well.
Right, okay. And like I said, I just didn't see the the planned number of each in the resolution. I'm not sure if we if that's similar to what we normally do.
It is similar to what we normally do. And this is just giving us the authorization to finance it. But we will still do the proposition, the same number that we had presented at the board meeting.
Okay, that's what I was looking for. Thank you.
All right, Kelly, you want to go?
Ms. Betterbit?
Yes, is this a yes or an I vote? Yes?
Yes, is fine.
Mr. Kaseleal?
Yes.
Ms. Glenn is excuse, Mr. Rakowski?
Yes.
Ms. Stabler?
Yes.
Mr. Singh?
Yes.
Mr. Wolf?
Yes.
Ms. Yur?
Yes.
Mr. Wade?
Yes. All right, moving on to the consent agenda. The use of the consent agenda permits the Board of Education make more effective use of time by adopting a single motion to cover those relatively routine matters which are included. Any member of the board who wishes to individually a particular piece of business on a consent agenda may so indicate, and that item will be considered and voted on separately. Thus preserving the right of all board members be heard on any issue. Is there anything on the consent agenda that would like pulled? During none, I need a motion to approve 5.01 through 5.22.
So moved.
It's Mike Rakowski. Second.
That was Mike and who is that, Anthony or James?
Anthony.
Anthony. Comments or questions? All those in favor? Aye. Thumb up, or if you don't have a picture, say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, that's everybody, that's a, oh. All right. I don't see a need for the executive session. I don't think it's essential right now. I need a motion to waive 6.01.
Second.
Meredith, and then Mike. Comments or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Aye. Eight oh. All right, I need a motion to adjourn the meeting.
Motion.
Meredith?
Second.
Alyssa? Comments or questions? I would just like to say, I thought for the first time doing a board meeting over Zoom, we did a really good job. Everyone, I mean, it wasn't hard to hear, and it really went pretty, pretty well in sync, I thought. So
Thanks to Mike Healy for helping us get it all set up.
Absolutely. Good job, Mike. All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
All right, eight oh at 76.
That's a record.
Good night, everybody.
Thanks, everybody. Be well.
Thank you.
Happy, happy. Good night.